Okay, councilmembers, you may join the meeting now if you wish on your iPad.
All right. I will call the work-study agenda meeting for September 20, 2018, together, and go forward with roll call.
Again, Mayor Scoog is absent. Vice Mayor Nye?
I'm definitely here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
Still here.
Councilmember Mallory is absent. Councilmember Rooney?
Here.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
We have a quorum. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let's just go right down to Agenda Item 3, that's discussion. Yavapai Road pavement overlay project and construction contract. And we have Mr. Ron before us. And I should be appropriate, Mr. Ron Pine.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
So I have an exhibit up here, and this is our roadway maintenance plan for this fiscal year that we've pretty much finished. And you'll see three components on there. One is the pre-chip maintenance, which is roadway edge patching and crack sealing. The other component is chip seal, which is a high and a low-volume chip seal. And then we have the overlay. And on here in red is the Yavapai Road overlay. All of these are funded through the half-cent sales tax which Council approved in 2016. And it generates $2 million a year that we're able to put towards roadway maintenance, which has really been a huge boost for us because during the downturn, we kind of got behind on our roadway maintenance. And what we really like to have optimal is a five-year cycle where every five years your road is having some sort of resurface treatment. And so we're in year three of five years trying to catch up to where we're into that cycle. And it's been a huge boost. One of the things that we're all able to do is the overlays. And in years past, we've done a viewpoint drive between Highway 89 and Robert Road. And last year, we did a portion of a spouse drive from Aguafria to Glassford Hill Road. And really, this is a little bit different than the chip seal. This is something that we'll do on a roadway where obviously it needs some sort of treatment, and we're seeing a little bit of a higher volume of traffic flow. And the existing roadway has a good enough structure that we can pretty much use that as the base and just put an asphalt cap on it. We can widen the road a little bit more and extend the service life of that road quite a bit more into the future. So that's where we're at here with the Yavapai Road. And here is kind of the overlay. It's about 2,600 feet. The first part is just, pretty much in the red is just where we're going to actually remove the existing pavement that's there. It's about three inches of pavement. It's really beat up, so we're just going to remove it and just completely replace that. And then we're going to put the two-inch cap on what you see in yellow there. So it's about 2,600 feet. Pretty simple project, a little longer than a month to complete. We had five bids, pretty competitive. The top three were within a few thousand dollars of each other, so pretty competitive bid. The low bidder was Earth Resources Corporation. Their bid was $197,599. There's a recommendation from the engineer, Gordon Bowers, to go ahead and award that. And then also, we have his construction administration services. Obviously, he's the design engineer. We like to retain him on board for the construction administration and oversight as well. And so he has his engineer amendment there for $19,950, which we also recommend approval of. Pretty straightforward, nice little project.
Right. And we're familiar with Earth Resources Corporation. We worked with them before.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's always comforting for me.
Yep.
Does any of the councilmembers have any questions?
Yeah. Will the work be done primarily during the day or in the evening?
During the day. It'll be done during the day. That's what we're shooting for, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so there's going to be a small amount of disruption to the traffic patterns?
There will. We're going to recommend, we'll work that out with the contractor. We're going to recommend like a pilot car where one half of the road is shut down, maybe use a pilot car. We've also, we've already talked to the fire department because obviously they have a fire station that's right there. So we're coordinating operation with them as well, so.
Well, the nice thing is where it's located, there are other roads that go all the way across, so it's going to be a minor disruption, not a major disruption.
Yes, and it is in a residential neighborhood, so obviously, you know, we say, you know, don't start any equipment before 7:00 a.m., which is, you know, pretty much town code standard.
Thank you, Ron. That was exactly where I was going to go.
Yes.
Does any of the councilmembers have any questions?
Ron, help me remember. I sat with Norm, and we went through the whole schedule of the different areas of the town. Where are we at on that schedule? I know we're hitting different areas and different fiscal years.
Well, what you see in the yellow, which is the pre-chip maintenance? That's the crack sealing and the edge patching where, you know, some of the chip sealed roadways are kind of sloughed off a little bit, so we're reestablishing those. So what you see in yellow is what's going to get chip sealed next year.
Okay.
And what's in the low-volume chip seals, what we've done this summer, which is the yellow and black checkered areas.
Okay. And if I remember correctly, we have multiple areas because it was like he ran out of colors to be able to put all of it together with the different areas.
Right, yeah. It's pretty extensive. I mean, $2 million really, you know, we can really go a long ways with it, so.
Thank you.
Do you feel that we're on our makeup schedule? You know, as you indicated, we were so far behind. Where are we in that particular schedule?
We figured, I believe, five years, and we're in year three right now, so we're close, we're getting closer.
And we're on track.
We are on track, yes.
We are going to hit that five-year rotation.
Good.
Based on the way that the guys have gone ahead and broken everything up. So we will be on a five-year rotation, and in two years, it starts over again.
Right. Because, of course, all of us were concerned at the deterioration, you know, that continued to take place, so this is all really good news. Any other questions? So I think we're ready for this to come back or revoke?
Next week.
Next week. All right. We'll look forward to it, Ron.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's just move on to item number four, and that is the proposed revisions to the Town of Prescott Valley customer accounts. Regulations, I should say. And it looks like we have Mark Lewis up here to talk to us. So is it going to be painful, Mark?
Painful?
Well, changes and updates.
Change?
You know, the word change?
Change is constant. So good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be back. Less emotional this week than the last week, right?
Yeah.
So I'm here to talk about the proposed changes to our customer account regulations for the division that I oversee dealing with the water sewer utility bills. So the purpose of these regulations is basically, it sets the parameters and guidelines for how my division is ran. It gives us the protocols to follow when situations come up, procedures that we have to follow on state consistent with it. The purpose of these also is to remain up-to-date based on the evolving changes in the operations that happen. One thing that my next side will see, it's been almost seven years since these have been changed. So back then, we were doing things a little bit more manually, less electronically, so we have a lot of changes that just over time have been implemented, so we want to make sure we're accurate with those. And also, we want to make sure that we maintain an equal and mutual fairness to the town and also the utility customers themselves. So as mentioned, the last change was July 14 of 2011. These changes basically came about because there was state legislation passed that differentiated owners and tenants with utility accounts. Part of that was it exempted owners and tenants from paying deposits if they had established history with the organization or municipality. And also, one of the changes we made is it set up our procedures to allow our customers to be refunded their deposits after 12 months of on-time payments. So the current changes that we're proposing for this is to update operational changes, procedural and verbiage. We need to update how we are accepting applications, doing terminations, collecting deposits, returning deposits, all these things that have been updated over the last eight years. It's time. Typically, I think we probably do this about every two to three, but I've got a couple changes in my position, people coming in and out, so I think this kind of fell off a little bit. So here we are to make up for it. The biggest major change that we will be asking for is to reestablish and define the timelines for the bill generation date, the due date of the bill, the delinquent notices, and the disconnection date of an account that is not paid in a timely manner. So our current timeline right now is a 55-day timeline from the bill generation date to the disconnection date for an account that has not been paid. Our bills are always due on the 20th day after the generation date. We do have a seven-day grace period for our customers that might be out of town, we have to wait for the mail to come in, anything like that. So we want to make sure we give that leniency to our customers, because that's a very important thing that I think the town has, and I want to make sure we maintain that moving forward. After that seventh day, the delinquent notice is mailed via the post office, and that customer is given an additional 22 days to make that payment before any further action is required. After that 22nd day of delinquency, we're now at day 50, where we have not received the payment. At that point, we deliver a door hanger to their door, we place it on their door, and it's a big bright green or orange notice that says, hey, we need, a payment was needed and we're yet to receive it. Immediate action is required. As a courtesy, one of the things that has come up in the last two years with some technology implementation is a disconnect phone call. So we have our automated phone line that we are able to program, and on the day before disconnect, we basically call each customer that is in threat of disconnect to say, hey, here's your last courtesy reminder, here's an option to pay if you press 1 right now. That's been utilized extremely well in the last two years, so it's been successful. And then unfortunately, on the 55th day without payment still, we do have to protect the assets of the town and disconnect the customer until they are able to get their account up to So on the proposed changes, what it would eliminate is the length of time between the delinquent notice being mailed and the door hanger being delivered. As I mentioned earlier, we had a 22-day span between the delinquent notice and the door hanger being delivered. But what that was doing was allowing the delinquent notice more time than the actual regular bill to be paid. So that was kind of a discrepancy that we've been working around for the last several years. What this does, it basically keeps a tighter schedule to keep the notices on track from being mailed out, door hangers going out, phone calls being made, and the disconnect So what would be the benefits of reducing these options for our customers? It reduces that 22-day span from the delinquent notice to the door hanger to eight days. So on top of the seven-day grace period from the due date of the bill, we now have another eight days for the customer to make that payment with the delinquent notice. At that time, we will then deliver the door hanger eight days later rather than 22 days If it did come down to a disconnect, we currently collect the entire balance on the account plus fees and deposits if required. This would allow us the leniency to collect only the past due balance, so rather than become caught up in basically a disconnection circle and you're constantly and repetitively in this gloom and doom of disconnect for your water bill, it's going to help us assist the customers in getting up to date. On the town-side benefit, we do have a collections vendor that we do use. This will lower the number, or the, lower the amounts of collection accounts that we are sending to them. Currently, we're sending accounts at $200, $250, $300 each month. This will help reduce those outstanding balances to an estimated $75 to $100. So on top of that, it decreases that town uncollectible balance is what the finance term is. So anything that goes to collections is basically a write-off for the town and an assumption that our probability of recouping that is more than likely not going to happen. So it lowers that number. So the current timeline for sending an account to our collections vendor, we're currently at six months from the bill generation date. So when an account is terminated or disconnected, and this is voluntary or involuntary, first notice, if that final bill is not paid or that disconnect is not paid, a courtesy letter is sent out saying, hey, we had a bill due or a balance due, it hasn't been paid, that's at the 30-day mark. If we still do not receive payment at that point, a second notice will generate at the 60-day mark from that termination or disconnect, and then a third and final one at the three-month mark is then generated and mailed out. One of the things that we're looking to increase our recouping these costs is eliminating the 125-day span of inactivity on our part. So once that 90-day notice goes out, we don't do anything else for another 90 days. So what this does is allows these customers that we're trying to get a hold of, find out where they're at, so we can send them these letters in collections, allows the collections companies a more advantageous position in order to find where these people are, so we can communicate this outstanding bill to them. So as you see, on this changing to that 90-day, we still would send out two notices at 30 days and 50 days from the bill generation day. And at that point, I'm sorry, 30 days and 50 days from the termination day. And at that point, at the 90-day mark, the three-month mark now, we're sending them to collections to recoup those losses rather than wait an additional 125 days on top of that. So it shortens that timeline and increases our chances of recouping that lost money. So the benefits of dropping from the 180-day to 90-day would be increasing collection agency's success for contacting the account holder, increases our success of receiving the payment, lower dollar amount is sent to collections, decreases the town uncollectible balance. One of the interesting things would be like, okay, what's an uncollectible when it goes to collections? Why is this something that needs to be addressed? We currently have over 2,000 accounts in collections totaling more than $321,000. And that's just in the last few years. Going back 10 years to 2008 to now, that number jumps to over $750,000 that we've had in collections. So this would definitely be a useful strategy and advantageous to us to consider adopting in the regulation changes. With that, I know it's a lot of changes and kind of a long process to kind of go through, but I'm more happy to answer any questions or comments.
Yeah, just a quick question. Now, the timelines, it doesn't matter whether you pay on a monthly basis or you have auto pay, correct?
They will not affect that at all.
I had a couple of questions. One was that how is a account disconnected? Is that manually or, because I know we have some of our accounts are, you know, on the Internet, others are not?
We're about halfway through our meter conversion to like web-based meters. They're not automated meters, though. As far as the reads and stuff, they are web-based, but the actual turning off of disconnecting an account, whether it's voluntary or involuntary, here's physically being.
Some manual process. And then if we have somebody who is in arrears and they move or whatever they do, they come back and reopen an account, how is that addressed?
If the account is balanced paid in full, it's just a simple process of reactivating the customer, setting them up at their new address. If there is a balance that's due to the town, we collect that balance before any application is processed. If the account is in their arrears long ago and it's in collections, we cannot do anything until they contact the collections agency and make that payment to them.
Okay. And you don't see any way to tweak our collections process? Is that just simply something we turn over and our contractor deals with that in the way they deal with it?
Yeah, the whole point of going to collections is so we don't have to deal with it.
Yeah. So is there any incentive, and you may or may not know, maybe more questions than I should be asking in terms of closing accounts?
With closing the accounts as far as getting them to collections?
Collections?
The advantage of getting them to collections sooner and for a lower dollar amount is to increase the success rate of getting that dollar amount that is in.
Right. But we rely on the collections contractor to close those accounts sometime in the future. And I assume that's countered in our account in terms of how many are still in, you know, pending, I guess is what you'd call it?
Yes and no. Because when we send an account to collections, we at that time consider it as being uncollectible. So at that point, we basically assume our chance of getting this back is next to nothing. So anything sent to collections that we do recoup from is considered a high success.
All right. So is that countered in your uncollectible until that's resolved one way or another, or do you know?
It's counted in uncollectible once it's set.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. Some communities have connections with social services because there are families that have tragedies, and it isn't their desire, you know, to not be able to pay the bill. Do we have any connections where we can refer the appropriate customer to get some assistance?
Yes, we have several, and we actually have a list that we give to our customers on a regular daily basis almost. St. Vincent de Paul, Hope's Attic, Thrift Store, NaCOG helps with deposits, and Emmanuel Lutheran Church, just to name a few off the top of my head.
I'll confess, I'm from Emmanuel Lutheran, and I knew that answer, but I thought it was important for people to hear it again.
Oh, absolutely.
That we're not merciless. We understand people get in situations that are not of their choice.
Absolutely.
So thank you for listing all those for the people at home listening for you here. I'll ask you to share that information.
And sometimes, and we do understand that things do get rough and don't go as planned. Emergencies happen. We do offer extensions to your account for up to an additional week if you need to make it to that next payday or you need to, you know, whatever you have to do. As long as it keeps your water on, we're happy that we came to an equitable solution.
Exactly. Are there any other further questions? Are we ready for this to be brought back?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Next week.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, let's move right on to five, discussion on proposed financial policies revision. And this sounds like it's complicated as well. And Katie, thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm bringing before you discussion items related to revising financial policies. We have several financial policies that haven't been updated in many years, some 18 years, some less than that, just depending. But over time, things change, best practices that are recommended by the GFPA, the Governmental Financial Officers Association, change. They're very helpful to organizations or municipalities. They give us good guidelines to base the framework of our policies on. So a lot of those resources have been referenced during this revision of these policies, as well as the legal team. Ivan Legler especially has reviewed the policies to make sure that we're still in compliance with state and federal statutes to ensure we're keeping up with things that we need to keep up with. And then there's some other items as well, just to make certain things smoother as far as the operational side, but we'll go through those on each policy to discuss. So first, the first policy is the moving expenses policy. The biggest change here is when this policy was last updated in 2000, the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act wasn't around, and with that came new responsibility on the employer for making sure employer or employee benefits were taxed properly as far as moving expenses. So when someone is allowed a moving allowance, the taxability is different, so we address that in the policy. As well as previously, we had language regarding a term of contract with managers or department directors that would be hired on, and if they didn't fulfill a certain length of contract service, they would be required to reimburse the town. This isn't something that has occurred. Additionally, because of the at-will state of employees in Arizona, it seemed like a good time to remove that language. Would you guys like to ask questions as we go through each policy or at the end?
All right, down there, if you're comfortable with asking as we go along? All right, thank you, Katie. Go ahead.
Okay. So the next policy is the budget amendments policy, and this policy was last updated in 2002. The biggest thing in this policy is changing the year-end deficit language. Previously, we had stated in the policy that on an annual basis, any departments that were, or any line items that were over budget would be brought before council. That's not something that's been in practice. We report that information through the comprehensive annual financial report on an annual basis, and we look at it on a department level at that point. But we're recommending we change it to a fund level, which is what the state auditor general uses for their determination, so.
Yeah, we want to keep the state auditor happy.
And then we would also be clarifying the council approval on budget transfers. Previously, we have always felt the intent was whenever any transfer impacted a personnel or capital line, it should be brought before council. And the language didn't state that as clearly before, so we're making sure it's a, it doesn't have to hit both of those things. If it impacts capital at all or personnel at all, it needs to be brought before council. So that was a clarifying item there.
That's logical.
And then the investment policy was updated more recently, but there have still been additional recommendations from the GFPA. So we've incorporated those in, as well as adding language to limit the amount of investment with each broker that we go through to 45%. Previously, we relied on another bullet point that specified 40% with each instrumentality or type of investment, but this just clarifies that, and it gives us a little more flexibility because with some of our brokers, we're always on the edge of that 40%. We have three that we use typically, and they're often near that limit. Additionally, it adds internal controls, which are already in practice, but it's just putting in the policy like dual-wire authorization for investment purchases and training staff and that ongoing training. So the fiscal planning and management policy. So the fiscal planning and management policy, previously called the financial policy, also has some revisions, but they're mainly to come into compliance with Arizona revised statutes. Specifically, there's a section where we previously stated that we would, a business would lose their business license should they fail to pay privileged tax, which is not something we have the authority to do any longer. State had changed that, I believe, a year ago, two years ago. So we were coming into compliance with that. It was a little line in there. And then our petty cash policy, not much changed. It was minor grammatical changes on that policy. Travel policy, previously, any travels needed to go to the town manager for authorization. This, what we're trying to change is to allow department directors discretion over same-day travels where only registration expenses apply. So what that would mean is if there is a conference in Prescott and there's, you know, a $200 registration, previously, that would go to Larry. And so it was a lot of paperwork for, you know, a small expenditure that didn't require any overnight travel. Any overnight travels would still be going to the town manager for review. Additionally, this isn't part of the policy. It's always been kept separate in the procedural side. But the per diem amounts, we're also looking at increasing that for staff. We haven't increased those in many years, and we're well below the GSA, General Administration Services of the U.S. Government Standards for the lowest area. So we are looking to align with the lowest tier on the GSA standards, which is going from $36 to $46 per day. We did leave out the incidental expenses, so we are still a little lower. We just went based on, you know, our breakfast, lunch, dinner meals and left out the additional $5 of incidental. And then our fixed asset policy is a new policy. We've never had anything formal in place for this. So it was time we get something formalized as far as the fixed asset policy goes to go over when we dispose of assets, when we need to depreciate them, just the ins and outs of the fixed assets recording, which is all things we do currently. It's just being, it's becoming official through this policy. Additionally, this policy wouldn't be effective until July 1 of 2019 because we were recommending that our fixed asset amount would move from $3,000 to $5,000. And what that means is when we buy equipment, if it is under a $5,000 cost, we would treat it as minor equipment. It would be an operating cost instead of a capital expenditure. And there's a lot of reasons for that. We haven't changed that amount in many years. And right now, we do count anything $3,000 or more, which means they get depreciated and everything else. So sometimes there's very small amounts getting depreciated. $5,000 will cut off quite a bit of equipment that doesn't really need to be on there. And then finally, our purchasing procedure, which is I'm sure the one we're going to have the most discussion about. This policy was actually last updated in 2005, but the last time we increased the expenditure limitation under the town manager was in the year 2000. And at that point, it went from $5,000 to $16,000 at the current council approval level it is today. So anything over that amount comes before council for approval. And we are requesting a few different changes with this policy. Requesting that the department director's purchase approval limit goes from under $1,000 to $2,500. And that would give the department director's discretionary spend under that amount without it having to go to the town manager for review for those small purchases. And then increasing the town manager's approval threshold from $16,000 to $50,000 or to under $50,000. And anything $50,000 or above would require council approval still. And on the RFCA, there's a table that shows other cities and the limits that they have established along with their populations, which we're one of the lowest right now as far as that threshold goes. And we are proposing these amounts based on the averages, especially with the council threshold. And we also are clarifying language to specify that any multiple items purchased in the same transaction count together towards that limit. So it's not like we're buying, you know, 20 widgets and they're each under this amount, so we don't need to go. If the cumulative amount is over the threshold, it would need to be brought to the appropriate level of approval. And then we also specified whether or not the mayor or town manager would sign contracts allowing for any kind of professional service as long as it is under the council approval amount. The town manager would be able to sign those contracts until a point in time when it exceeds the amount that his approval threshold restricts him to. And then it would come before council for any further purchases. And then we also merged procedural documents with the policy. So instead of having multiple documents to reference, we included just kind of more of our operational side as far as when purchase orders are needed versus our other kinds of purchasing avenues like field purchase orders, which are for smaller amounts, or direct pay authorizations, which are all different operational avenues. And with that, sure, question?
All right, we're ready.
I don't know that this is really a question, but I do have a concern about the $50,000 limit. I realize it's been a long time since we've looked at that limit. But I think it's hard for me to justify jumping from $16,000 to $50,000. And it's not that I'm concerned about anything that's being done in any department in the town or, you know, it's just that I think we should take steps. I really believe that if we look at something in the $25,000 or $30,000 range, something midway between the $16,000 and the $50,000 is a more practical way of looking at this. And if it takes us a couple of steps to get to the 50, then that's fine. But I think we should look at it that way. That's just my feeling.
Yeah, I was looking at that number also when I looked at the chart. And yeah, the jump from 16,000 to 50,000 really stood out. And yeah, I side with Rick on that, that maybe we should take a smaller step, possibly go to 30, you know? It's something that we could more easily justify. But the rest of the stuff, I mean, it just looks like good housekeeping on your part. You know, a lot of these things needed to be brought up to date and modernized. So bring it to the 21st century kind of thing. So, good job.
Except for the item that you council members just addressed. I chair the Northern Arizona Council of Governments, and we've been behind. And now we've caught up, and I want to thank you for that. Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to join and give my 10 cents worth or $25,000 worth. Anyway, I agree. I think it's quite a jump from 16,000 to 50,000. And I think it'd be more, you know, a little better, I think, if we had something in the middle, 25 to 30. And I'd like to see that change. So I support Councilman Anderson's recommendation.
I appreciate that you took the time to do the housekeeping on this. And it's no small effort, and it's not a real sexy thing, but it's something that needs to be done. And having worked with other local governments, you know, things such as thresholds are important so that we can continue to do business in an expedient manner. So I appreciate all of your work on this, Katie. Thank you.
Thank you. It was not just me, definitely couldn't have done it without staff. And especially, like I said, Ivan spent a lot of time reviewing these to make sure that we were in compliance.
We're going to get to you, Larry, but Rick has another question.
Yeah, just, to my way of thinking, I believe that the citizens feel that it's our job to look at those expenditures, and I do too. I think, I feel that I was elected to keep an eye on those kinds of things in the budget. And I don't think it's excessive to have us look at those few items that come up throughout the year, to have to take the time to review that item, to vote on that item. And I don't think it's going to slow down the business of the town for us to do that. And that's my major reason for looking at that. It truly has nothing to do with the way the town's run. It really doesn't.
I agree with all of you, quite frankly, that the jump from 16,000 to 50,000 is a bit extreme. And that's a lot of flexibility that, quite frankly, is not needed. And you take a look at the number of transactions that fall into this category. It's not that many during the course of a year. And it's important for the council to go ahead and see where those dollars are being spent. And if staff was going off in a direction other than what you had set as policy, then you have that as an opportunity, go ahead and slow that down or stop it. And so I think, you know, we are a bit behind because it hasn't been adjusted for a number of years. But going from the 16,000 to, say, 30,000 and see how that works and test drive that for a number of years and get all the bugs out, I think is wise.
Well, I waited to hear what everyone else said, and I agree with you. And there's another issue why I wouldn't want to do that. I don't like the precedent it was set. I don't like it at all. I think if we made wise comments, and we seem to all be in agreement. So with that adjustment, we welcome you to bring it back.
All right. Thank you. We will make that adjustment. And I'll be seeing you at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
And that is the last item on our work-study meeting, and I will return the meeting. But before I do, I want to thank all of you that came out tonight. And I enjoyed my little brief visits with you before. And I welcome you and ask you to come back.